All right, we'll start the meeting with the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready?
Ready.
Okay, we got the tape rolling. We start out with a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from August 1st, 2019.
Move.
That good?
Changes, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'll abstain since I wasn't here.
But would mean I would have to, too.
I'll abstain since I was excused.
I was with Meg.
Where were we?
We'll get right back to the meeting. Citizens comments, anyone wishing to address the board? Under the mic. Okay, move on. Trustees comments, Andy.
All set, just agenda items.
Mike?
All set.
Meg?
Just the agenda.
Bruce?
I guess I'm sticking to the agenda.
Well, I have to.
I think I will, for the moment.
Ruth?
Agenda's fine with me.
Mark?
I'm gonna need to request an executive session to discuss two upcoming contract negotiations.
That'll be item H.
Then the agenda items are sufficient, thank you.
Okay. Couple thoughts. I sent Bob an email from, I got from the school, the new law that allows schools to put cameras on their little wing that comes out and says stop, have to be paid for by municipalities if they agree to do it. Apparently, schools can't pay for it. Is that right, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. So Jamie wrote him from the school, sent me something. It's a little confusing with us because some of the buses might get, have a problem out in the town, in the village. So it's a little unclear exactly how that's all gonna work, so we're kinda looking into that to see whether we wanna get involved with paying for it. If you pay, if you pay part of it or all of it, all the fines that are collected from people who violate come to your municipality. I don't know if that would cover what it would cost to put the cameras on. Not that we don't wanna cooperate with the school, but kind of interesting little things, we'll be more on that, but the, isn't it like September 9th or something, the date that you have to commit? So we'll find out a little more.
The school said they want them. I didn't see that.
Didn't specifically say that, maybe they're waiting, if someone's gonna pay for them, they'll get them.
I'm sure they'd be happy to do it.
So...
I don't know if it's a problem.
Do the fees include just the hardware, or is it a monitoring service as well?
Well, the bigger issue is kinda what Mike had talked about before when we were talking about body cameras. You also have to store the tapes of every day, so now if somebody comes back and says, two days ago, I saw somebody go by a school bus on Mildred Avenue, and we would have to be able to go back in our records and find the tape from that bus and show, we don't have anybody going by a bus, camera was on, nobody went by all, all day. So now you're coming up with storage, and people that know how to do that stuff, I mean, we're not equipped to do that.
Are they not gonna be digital?
Did they provide any anecdotal evidence, the number of times that they've had bus drivers report, the number of instances? Cause off the top of my head, I'd have to check with, you know, my clerical staff, but I'm not recalling a significant number of these types of complaints within the village. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen, but I'm just not recalling, you know, these complaints on a regular basis. So I'd be curious to know what the cost is for, for all this in relation to how many complaints are being received. I'd be hard pressed to believe that the amount of fine money is received would cover the cost. It sounds, with the number of buses they have, this would be a fairly expensive proposition.
I would think. So we'll have to make a decision the first meeting in September, so we'll try to have all that information, so you can make a decision. But, you know, if you see anything where you can read up on it and have a little input, that'd be great.
So would all municipalities in the school district be part of the equation?
No, I'm not sure. Didn't make, wasn't made very clear, but I'll keep looking for information. If I get anything, or if Bob sends me something, I'll forward it on all of you.
I think the county has a similar plan to this as well.
Yeah, that would be nice if the county would say...
If the county did it, that superseded everybody else.
Right. And they would get all the fines, and they have the people...
Well, I don't think, that's a question as to whether the county would get fines, because the county doesn't have traffic, well, anyway, I have those kinds of traffic rules, but it's not really a lot to...
Okay.
Has there been anybody who said how many we're talking about, and the cost of each, or any...
There's hundreds of school buses.
Yeah, there's over a hundred, right?
And that's where you get into technology lack, you know, you try to fix something, here's what we can do, this is the stuff we had to do it, and tomorrow you could put dash cams on there and work just as well for 50 bucks apiece, you know? I've got a hundred dollar dash cam that's really nice, and it can record for three weeks, you know? It's, it's not hard.
The problem is, once you start to record data, all that information, especially if it's, if it's evidence-based, and somebody does go through, then you've gotta retain that according to New York State retention schedule, which is much longer period than three weeks, so...
But you pull the card. If something happens, you pull the card, probably go no one in. And there's other technical solutions to this problem than what they're proposing right now. It's simple.
And I think the, didn't they read in the law something about if it recorded something that was non, not a violation, that didn't have to be retained? It was only the ones where there was actually a tick.
Right. And, but, but the question then becomes, for these types of things, if they're not reported for a period of time, there's some, it's not that things can't be overcome, but the logistical issue, I'd be curious to know how many reports they have over the last five-year period, and where these incidents are occurring. I think the village could then make a more informed decision to have that anecdotal information.
All right. All right. Tomorrow's the opening of the spray park at Lysander Park, ribbon cutting at 6:00 if anybody wants to stop over, and there's fireworks tomorrow night at 8:30. Last week, Channel 3 and 5 had a hometown special on the village, and it was very nicely done. It was over there, the marching band was a big part of it. Some of our better food stuff was on display for them to taste, and I guess they particularly liked the WT Brewed Beer with the marshmallow fluff in it. But it was, anytime we get publicity like that, and all they kept doing was raving about how beautiful the village was and what a beautiful night, it was a, I guess the easiest way is a Chamber of Commerce type of night. Beautiful blue skies, breeze blowing, boats were lining up for the Saturday concert, so everything looked really nice. So thank you to Channel 3 and 5 for giving us a nice plug. And before we meet again, speaking of school buses, school will have opened probably right before we meet, so be paying extra caution, kids walking, buses, let's keep it safe. And that's all I have. We'll move on to departments, start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Codes, Greg?
Yeah, just a few things. Had a lot of questions about O'Reilly, whether they've pulled out, or whether they're not gonna construct, whatever, but they are moving forward, albeit slowly. Right now, they are, they've bid out the project, I do have an application, just waiting on the contractor information. The plans are all reviewed, just ready to go once I get the permit fee and the contractor's insurance and information.
They are building in Fulton, I was up there today and saw the new place where they're building, so...
Al Berici approached you for occupancy permits at all for this apartment building on Lock Street?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No, I just was over there this afternoon doing a final framing inspection, air sealing, inspection on the third floor. Next week will be the second floor, so they're gonna start sheet rocking on the third floor tomorrow in the first building.
Okay.
A couple more things, the, we've got an order out for 119 East Genesee Street, that order was not served until July 23rd, so we've got until next week before we can move forward on further inspections for that property, which I will, you know, be following up with Bob to make sure, you know, the next steps are followed. I also wanna get something in place for 51 Salina Street, that's the two small homes that are owned by Beville Town Center LLC, which is Dan Caholen and John Broad, it's a partnership. I wanna get something in place, an order in place to have those removed, just nothing's moving forward on those properties. Right now, they're unsecured, and they've been notified that they need to board those up or, or remove them, and just nothing's moving forward, so. I don't know if we need to add an agenda item for that in a little...
You wanna add an agenda item for that? Okay, so we'll make that, item H, and the executive session will be aye, and that will be a motion to enact...
A resolution to issue an order for removal of unsafe structures of 51 Salina Street.
Gotcha. Okay. Anything else?
That's it for now.
Good. Move on to our combo village clerk treasurer tonight, Anna.
Nothing for the village clerk, the treasurer, reports that I have given you all June's financials, you should all have those, please look them over, and I'm getting caught up finally, so thank you for your patience.
That it?
Yep.
Thank you. Now we'll move the other side of the room, our senior center, Ruth.
Well, I just wanna thank everyone who helped bring the car show together, including the DPW, Mayor, you were with us, it was a great night, the weather was perfect this year, which we are grateful for, about 45 cars participated, so thank you to the local community for their positive response to that. Also Congressman Catco hosted a fraud workshop at the senior center on August 7th, I just wanna let folks know that you can view that on PACB TV, just go to their website and you'll see the entire program there. And also, we have literature at the senior center, and I have a website if anyone wants to report fraud, which is FTC.gov backslash complaint. So that was very helpful, but it is online if you wanna see it and you weren't able to be there. And one more thing, just planning ahead, September 21st is our Walk for the Woods this year, join us, it's a fun day, it starts at 9 o'clock, we go rain or shine, and the registration form is available on the village website and at the senior center, so I hope folks can join us for that on September 21st. That's it.
We also have the forms from that event here, and I think Dan Buren, Town Hall, has some there, too. It was very good, a thought. Okay, we'll move on to public work, Steve?
All set, just agenda items.
Okay. And police department?
Nothing unless there's questions, Mayor.
Okay, I think we're all set with that. Very good. Move on to pending business. Two resolutions that we passed in between meetings, sorry, Bob, but we were kind of in a pinch, so I'll read those and ask for a motion to approve them for the record. These were on August 6, 2019, resolution number 96 slash 2019, moved by trustee Seco, seconded by trustee Stebbins, resolved to allow Chuck Chales Sunday, August 18th, 2019 Paper Mill Island concert to end at 11:00 instead of the board-approved time of 10:00 PM, and that was carried. Resolution 97 slash 2019, moved by trustee Seco, seconded by trustee Stebbins, resolved to waive the open container law for Jim Dale's Baldonsville Center for the Arts Paper Mill Island event to be held Saturday, August 10th, 2019, from 3:00 to 8:00 PM, and that was carried. Can I get a motion to accept those for the record?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I heard that the Shakespeare event was very good, I don't know how the attendance was, but a couple people on Facebook were saying it was really well done, different, very unique, and so they're trying different stuff, and it's good. Discussion possible action regards to hiring public sector HR consultants LLC to develop an employee handbook for the village of Baldonsville, a $2,500 cost to the village, $2,500 cost to PERMA, the village workers' compensation carrier. Mo is not here, I don't know if she was able to get ahold of them to find out how fast this could be done. You do have the paperwork that shows what they include, no, you haven't?
Oh yeah, but I thought you asked that question, I thought she gave you a response with like four weeks.
After four weeks, she sure did respond to that, yeah.
I thought that's why we had delayed this.
It was in, it was in an email that I got after the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was her response.
Okay.
So I think, I think we're ready to move on this.
All right. So we get a motion to hire public sector HR consultants LLC for $2,500 cost to the village and $2,500 cost to PERMA?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
There is this optional workshop for $750, I'm guessing we're not gonna do that then? That's correct?
No.
Or the, the total.
I'll ask that question. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item B, discussion possible action to support and adopt the 30-year Anadogu County Industrial Development Agency, OCIDA pilot with a developer that's renovating and developing the existing senior housing facility known as Conifer Village located at 700 Conifer Drive. We have with us tonight Kevin McCullough from Berkeley-Damon, Kevin, if you wanna come up to the microphone. We've had some questions about the pilot that I couldn't answer. Mark and Bruce specifically had questions, fellas, if you wanna chuck 'em out.
Before you, I just wanna remind the board that I had at the last meeting sent out a proposed resolution.
So that, that's the resolution that would, if you adopt it, that's the resolution that would be adopted tonight.
Okay. I think one of the concerns was, can the owner in five years sell this and somebody says, we're not gonna make it a, a senior place anymore, we're gonna just open it up to the public, and so we're gonna raise rents, and now they've got this pilot in place, or is it no longer in place if they sell it? Maybe you can give us a quick...
Sure, I'd be glad to respond. There are, again, my name's Kevin McCullough, I'm an attorney with Berkeley-Damon in Syracuse, and there are protections, requirements, restrictions that exist on multiple levels that require the continuation of this use as a senior citizen low-income housing facility. So the most important one from your perspective is the local limitation, and that is imposed by the IDA. So when this application came before the IDA, they will only approve this as a continuation using the HUD certificate for Section 8 Senior Citizen Housing, and in the event there's a sale to someone who changes it, any proposed use of that, an abandonment of the low-income housing, the IDA deal goes away. So you have protections then on the federal level because there's a HUD certificate in place. At the closing then, there is an additional certificate that actually gets filed in the county clerk's office, much the way a lien or a mortgage would, that then informs the public that this property is restricted in its use to this particular certificate, senior citizen low-income housing. So you're protected both at the federal level, you're protected in terms of a filing at the Anadogu County Clerk's Office, and then the documentation created by the Anadogu County IDA will also limit that use. And to the direct concern, it would make the pilot now become a nullity in the event that there was some change in use.
Any, anything else that you remember being concerned about?
Yes, and I'm not sure it was a question that was passed along or not, but on the OCIDA breakdown of the costs and the expenses, do you have a copy of that?
I do.
There's a fee that's part of the overall equation, I think, that's an OCIDA project fee for $571,458. What is that for?
That's for the Anadogu County Industrial Development Agency. So the IDA has a series of public, I don't represent the IDA on this project, our firm does on other things, so I know what it is, but on this project, I represent the developer, and the IDA is represented by the Harris Beach firm, Christopher Andrucci out of Rochester. The IDA has a whole series of published fee structure, and in this case, there are actually two separate fees. There is one for the standard project fee, which is either a point or a point and a quarter, I apologize, I forgot what it is now.
I understand the limitations and what you can answer.
And, and then the other fee is where there are bonds issued, so there are bonds issued as well, so the IDA has two separate fees in this particular case.
Okay, I think I just wanted to make sure I understood this correctly, they're getting over $570,000 for this project, that's what I...
The IDA?
IDA.
I'll, I'll look at the numbers again right now just to make sure, cause I, I didn't look at that, but...
It says 571...
It doesn't sound out of line.
Okay.
Because again, you know, altogether, they are basing their fee structure off of two different lines in that application. The first would be a total capital cost of 38 million, and then the second one is the bond amount, which my recollection is it's 15 or 16 million. So 571 would be in line with one point if I put together 17 million in bonds and 38 million in capital project, that would seem about right.
Okay, the other question I had was, why 30 years? Why do we have to, was there an initial proposal of 40, and then it went down to 30?
It was 40 and it went down to 30, and so two, two answers tied to the same thing. First one is, why do you go 30, and that's directly related to the term of the financing that you will get. The federal government, it doesn't matter whether you're dealing with HUD directly, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, any of them, all now look to the certainty of your real property tax projection. So if you have a pilot that's shorter than the term of the mortgage that they're going to provide to you, they will look at that period of time between the end of the pilot and the end of their financing and speculate as to what the taxes might be. And that speculation then is done on what I would call an appropriate banking worst-case scenario. So if you have something today that has an assessed value of 15 million, but you have a pilot that's treating it as if it's worth a million and a half, I'll just take those as numbers, for those years after the pilot, they will assume that the taxes would then be based on 15 million, there'd be no reduction in taxes, and they would then extrapolate and take your current tax rate and increase it 2% per year until you get 15 or 20 years out. What that does is kill your financing, because they then would reduce the amount that they would loan you and pretend that that same tax level would have to be funded every year throughout the life of this loan. So you wouldn't get the same loan.
Do you think the project would move forward in a 20-year financing period, or if there was no pilot?
No, absolutely not. If there's no pilot, this project is dead, unequivocally, and, you know, that's not developer speak, I mean, I, I have other low-income housing projects. Without a pilot on a project of this nature, remember the gross receipts on this project are 1.3 million a year, the net is, you know, like $50,000 a year. So even if you doubled the taxes over what the projection would be to start at the 215 and you doubled them, there's no money left, there's no money left to pay taxes. And that all relates back to the fact that these are controlled rent situations. All HUD rents are determined off of the average median income, the AMI in a community, and based upon that average median income, then there's a HUD structure for how much you can charge for a studio, a one-bedroom, et cetera, and, and then looking at what they, you charge for a person who's at 50% of AMI or less, or 60%, et cetera. And you can never raise those rents more than 2% per year throughout the life of the program. So the reason now, the second part of your question, was there an initial request for 40? The answer was yes, because at that point in time, the interest rates hadn't come down as much as they have in the last few months, and so the 30-year mortgage over the last 120 days became just as good as the 40 was at the time they originally ran these numbers. And so they went to a 30-year structure, and they now have that in place, assuming that we have a pilot. So really, the last piece here, the last two pieces are the approval of this board, of their resolution, because we already have it from the town and we have it from the school district. And then next Tuesday morning, we'd be back in front of the IDA, which was very welcoming of this project when we appeared there at the first meeting.
I can imagine they would be.
By, based on those fees?
Yes.
Has a request been made to waive, a request made of the county to waive their $571,000?
No.
But, so you're willing to ask the local municipalities for a tax break, but not the county for their break? I mean, why not? Why not pursue that?
I'm not aware that any IDA in the state ever waives its fee, and the reason that they do, they take that position is that if they do it for one, then they've done it for everybody, so, I mean...
They also have bound council fee that they have to pay.
Yeah. I mean, I've asked on a lot of projects, and I've never had a fee reduced in 40 years. I mean, Bob Baldwin stuck it to me many times for decades when he was chair of the county IDA board.
Now let's don't get nasty.
Do we, do we know what the current assessment on that property is, what the taxes are based on right now?
Just had it up.
I can tell you what the current tax burden is.
About 40, is that correct?
No.
That's us.
No, that's your share. The, the total tax burden is around 208,000. So in drawing up this pilot schedule and starting with 215, we took the current one and it went up a little, so that no one said, well, our, you know, we can't take a tax hit, everyone's position, all the representatives were the same.
The assessed value is 5,375,000.
And what's the purchase price? Has it been disclosed?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the application, hang on just a minute.
Did you say 38 million?
Many multiples of that, because the purchase price in one of the, purchase price is $22 million.
I mean, wouldn't that imply that the property is well under assessed right now? I mean, even the current tax is not...
Well, the purch...
It's a market value.
The purchase price in, in a low-income housing certificate situation is really driven by what you can get in low-income tax credits. So you actually, I know this sounds crazy, but one of the last things you do in looking at a transaction like this is determine the purchase price last. You first look at, what are my capital improvements that I have to make in order to bring this up to the level that we want to, to maintain the certificate, to obtain the continuing approval from HUD. You look backward and say, all right, if I need this much money, how much do I have to raise in low-income housing tax credits, at which it's like 10 or 11 million dollars is being raised here in equity through the sale of low-income housing tax credits. Those credits are mathematically driven by a number of factors. One is your purchase price, and the other is, how much are you spending on your improvements? So your purchase price, I know it sounds crazy, becomes less relevant when you know that by increasing the purchase price, you can then raise these tax credits. And so this project is really become, really is a, a function of the federal low-income housing tax credit program.
I guess I'm just gonna ask a question, maybe Bob knows the answer, if we do not support the project because we don't think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers, OCIDA has no, they're under no, it doesn't matter, does it, they could still approve the project overall?
Well, I mean, they, they could, but whether they would or not is...
Yeah, maybe I can address it, Mr. Wilder. The answer is, under the current county executive, they will not support it. Okay? So your question is right, in terms of powers of the IDA, they could just go and say, we don't need your approval, we're looking for it, but Mr. McMahon is...
I appreciate you coming and talking to us. We've had, we've had pilot agreements kinda thrust on us previously.
Understand.
And in many cases, the developers are not... And in many cases, the developers are not, um...they...they are rich people. They...and, uh...so, to just grant the pilot seems to be, um...somewhat unnecessary, because in those cases, it's not subsidized housing, and it's likely that the project would move forward, and actually, some of the development that was promised hasn't occurred, and there's a lot of other things that have kind of come on top of that. So, I do appreciate you coming to talk about it. I think with subsidized housing aspect of it, it's a lot more palatable for me, but, uh...I...I don't like having these things just kind of...you hear about them and...or you see them in the rearview mirror.
I do think his point with, uh...Ryan McMahon, our county executive, when this was first introduced, um...one of his representatives came out and she said, "He knows that people have...have taken a hard hit with pilots," because the la...the pilot for the Morgan property, which is now sitting there with nothing happening...
Well, that's what I was referring to.
The school, Van Buren, and us all spoke negatively at the public hearing and got a letter six days later saying it was granted. And he understands...we're not the only ones that have had it rammed down our throat. And he said, "I don't want that to happen anymore. These can't happen. People have got to have a chance to have their say." And, I mean, I really felt that the...the one for the Tri-County Mall, uh...and he turned on a tape recorder, the three of us said what we've had to say, and she said, "Okay," turned it off and left. Said, "Is that it? We...we made our little statement and you're...there's no questions? Nothing." So, Ryan is making an effort here to make this a much more, uh...where we have more input. And he...he wants us to feel, when we get done, that we weren't treated rudely.
Well, as I said, I appreciate that. I don't like the Osida project fee. I feel like we're subsidizing Osida. And, um...so, it's kind of torn on us. It's...it's a big number.
It's 13 years of what they would pay us at the current rate. I mean, it's...that's a large number. For what?
Bob, can you explain where those Osida fees go again, just so we're clear? I mean, is...how much of that is stuff that they're obligated to pay out?
Well, I mean, they...again, they're...they're, um...getting financing through municipal bonds. And so, they're...they're floating the bonds, uh...because the title would go to Osida. That is, the building...the title of the property is in...in the IDA. The IDA then, um...issues the...the bonds, uh...and there's substantial fees for doing all of that. Um...you know, and correct me if I'm...you know, if I'm misspeaking, but basically, that's... that's the history of...of funding at the IDAs. And they use those funds to, um...provide, um...first of all, um...that they...the IDA does need those funds to...to support the IDA itself. In other words, they're...they're a...a separate entity. They're not part of the county government, really, although technically, uh...I mean, technically, they're not, and as a political matter, they might be, but, uh...so, they look at these fees to be able to support what they do, and...and they also, um...provide funding for some other things. So, it...again, these are things you never see or never have seen in the past, because there was never the transparency that the county executive now has.
All right, do we have any further questions for...
I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate your reaction coming out.
Thank you.
All right. Um...any more discussion? And I get a motion to support and adopt Osida's pilot for the Conifer property, as proposed in the resolution that Bob presented to us?
Move.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Uh...I'll ask a question about the...the resolution itself. Um...the third whereas, after careful consideration, the village believes that entering into the pilot is in its best interest. Do we have to say that? Because I'm not sure I agree with that.
Um...no, I don't...I don't think that it's, um...you know, again, that's just proposed language. You don't...
I think because this is a subsidized, uh...development, and I've...have a little bit more information on, uh...the nature of the development itself. It's gonna be better housing, and it's gonna be a...
You could change that language and just say, uh...believes that entering into the pilot is proper.
I'd agree with that.
Because if...if you didn't think that it was proper, you wouldn't be adopting the resolution.
I may...I may vote against it anyway, but, uh...I just wanted to ask that question. I don't see how it is, and I mean, we're...we're representing the taxpayers. And, um...I think the timeframe for the...the period is excessive, and the percentage is not great that we're getting each year. So, um...and I don't like the Osida fee. Um...having said that, I...I think I'm not the only one who, um...should speak on this, but I mean, if we're gonna...
Well, I'm waffling. A little while ago, I wasn't. Um...I too appreciate your candor...candidness in...in addressing us. Um...I looked at the village map, and I don't see where a pilot ever is in the best interest of the village of Bolensville, to be honest with you. Um...this is a...as you point out, is a unique situation where you're...it's...although it does sound like the corn bank to me, where you're paying farmers not to raise something, getting...harvesting this HUD money, that it's very confusing. I don't think...I appreciate your short address. I'm sure I should spend months trying to figure it out. Um...but I'm sitting here still trying to determine if in good conscience I could vote yes.
Well, would I be wrong in saying that, uh...us approving a pilot would be subsidizing this project by reducing their...
Well, yeah, I mean, it...when you say subsidized, they're...you're giving them economic benefit. The other thing the village, uh...and the...and the towns also take into consideration is the fact that, um...the population, uh...that people that would be taking advantage of...of, um...retail within the village, um...and, uh...become, um...residents of this area, uh...that would...that would give back to the...to the local commerce is...is another thing to...to consider.
But they're Section 8. They're not giving back tons. I mean...
No, and that...but on the other hand, it...it does provide housing for people who rely on Section 8.
Yeah, I...I understand that. That's why it's, uh...that's why it's kind of a double-edged sword on this one.
Yeah, I mean, it's...it's hard to think we would...would want to say, "Well, maybe that would just dry up and go away someday." Where would all these people go? There's no other place in Bolensville that would be able to take care of them. So...
I...I think we can all appreciate that, but, you know, we pay federal taxes that give the HUD the money to do this. We pay county taxes. We pay this tax, we pay that tax. Now, we're asking our taxpayers to kick in some more. You know, that's...it's gonna be quite a lot.
I wish we had the opportunity to have this discussion prior to the...the development of Tri-County Mall, 'cause I would absolutely echo everything you guys are saying. The curveball for me is the fact that it is...
That process wasn't in place.
The curveball for me, which...which I agree with it and appreciate the transparency, but this project being Section 8, and knowing the history of Conifer and how much it's meant to the village and how much it's meant to, you know, Tops, or the Dollar Store, or all these, or all this stuff that's, uh...used by that community walking distance, puts me in a tough spot, too.
I...I...I agree with that, too. Um...if...if we had some type of, um...indication that this...this process is going to continue with future pilots, proposed pilot agreements, I would support this one, and probably not future ones, but, um...
I would probably agree with that, too.
I'm not sure how long that's gonna last, but, um...
We did get burned on the Tri-County one. I mean, that was...uh...before we vote, do we...do we want to change the language of that part of it?
That's...that would be my recommendation, just because it's my opinion.
I agree with Mark. I don't think it's in the best interest of the community.
I think it's prudent.
Yeah.
It's not popular semantics.
Whatever, yeah.
We can change it to that and change that part of the resolution.
Right, 'cause it hasn't been adopted yet.
So, if we change the...take out the "in its best interest" to "is proper," or something similar.
Ruth or Megan have any insights you want to share?
Yeah, I mean, having had two grandparents who lived in Conifer back when it was first developed in the early 80s, I know that they thrived there, and I know that, you know, it was a nice to have them close, and they did consider themselves, you know, rightly residents of our community, so...
Well, they are. There's no doubt about it.
Forty years later, I can only assume that, or...
More than that.
Yeah, forty years later, I can only assume that they're in need of some updating from... And I think those...the residents in there now are...are certainly entitled to...
That's the part that's easy to swallow.
Yeah.
Or is...is, um...just the...I don't understand the finances as well as I should, probably, and we're asking...being asked to vote on this, and the math seems...
Well, I'm gonna tell you what. I was in on the meeting, and I listened to it, and I didn't have a clue what...I mean, because it's...as he said, it's backwards when you start doing all this stuff, and then you figure out the property, you know, the sale price after you've done everything else, which makes...
It seems like you're making the math work at that point, so, um...
Well, um...any...any further points anybody wants to make? Otherwise, we'll...we'll vote. On the, uh...resolution to accept the Osida pilot, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm...I'm gonna support it. Um...I hope we get additional, uh...chances to review pilots going forward, and it's simply because of the subsidy, uh...aspect.
Yeah, I'm gonna support it based on this specific case and hope that who is our...whoever's the next county executive continues to allow municipalities to participate in the process.
I will write a letter to Ryan McMahon with those, you know, your sentiments.
Maybe more clarification. If there's ever another one that comes in front of us, I'd really like to understand that those fees a little better.
Yeah, they could send out and educate the...the voting bodies a little bit on what we're voting ahead of time.
All right, so that...so that issue is carried.
Okay. And thank you for coming in.
Thanks, again.
Thank you.
Obviously, our argument wasn't with you and our concerns.
And honestly, they're all great questions and great discussions, so thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Kevin?
All right, move on to new business. Item A, uh...get a motion accepting with regret the resignation of Deputy Clerk Linda Ross effective Monday, September 16th, 2019.
Move.
It will be a...a big loss for the personality of the building. I mean, those of you who know Linda, she's a dynamite lady, but our replacement is...is really shaping up pretty good. Um...I know Mo is very pleased, uh...so, we feel pretty comfortable that things will just be about as flawless as they can be when we make the transition. And I think, is it Tuesday? There's gonna be at 3:00 in here an ice cream...
Ice cream social.
Social to say goodbye to Linda. So, any of you who've got a chance at 3:00 on Tuesday, feel free to stop by. I'm sure she would be excited to see you, because she enjoys everybody that she works with in the village, and so...so, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item A, can we get a motion to approve Kerry Mitrzak? I don't...huh? Mitrzak? See, I thought that before, and I...request to block off Mildred Ave at the corner of Syracuse Street and the corner of Mildred and Canton for a party on Saturday, September 21st, from noon to 5:00. Barcage and the DPW are requested. There will be no alcohol.
Moved.
I'll second it.
Kerry's here, if you have any questions.
So... Is that the whole stretch? Right, that's the entire street, and you have everybody else's permission to...so that...
I think so, half.
And, um...so, what do the other have to? Are they gonna complain?
I'm gonna do a flyer. It's for a little boy that lives on our street. He's been in the hospital most of his life. Um...he's been in the hospital 90% of his summer, and we're hoping to have him home and, uh...just have fun with him. And, um...if the neighbors that don't want to participate, I get their grief, but it's easier to meet in the center of the road than it would be to have it designated, like, at somebody's house. Like, if they need to go to the bathroom, they can go to their own home. Um...you know, we're just...we want to get, like, two basketball hoops, block off the street, have a little competition with the kids and the neighbors and the adults. We're thinking about maybe getting the fire department involved, and maybe if they bring a rig down, let the kids on it. It's just more of like a kid-friendly...
It sounds like a great cause. I mean, that's part of the...part of why we ask questions.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
You don't have any concerns?
None whatsoever.
Okay, all right.
So, people up in Robinson, or whatever that street's called, are part of it?
I'm gonna do a flyer, and I'm gonna actually go door-to-door. Um...some way, get it in the mail. But they will be aware and to let them know. They're more...I'm not gonna deny anybody not coming.
Right.
But, you know, some people have made their lives a little bit hectic, and I'm not about that. This is about Joey, and it's about him getting some type of freedom from not being hooked up to tubes.
Sounds like a wonderful idea.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll help you if you take any heat on it.
Oh.
We're behind you, okay?
I think I can handle it.
Did we get a motion on that yet?
Yes.
We have a motion in a second?
Hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you so much. And feel free to stop by.
Are we invited to come?
You guys can, absolutely. Have at it. I mean, it's not just for our block. It's for, like, his family. I mean, I was up at Galisano the day before he went into his surgery, and all the nurses, the doctors, if they can make it, they're gonna come. We have a connection with us through basketball. We're hoping to get a couple of pla...um...couple of players to come out, so...it may be nothing. If he's not home, it'll be canceled, and I'll be sure to let you guys know.
Okay.
It all depends on where he's at, so...
Would that be...would that mean that it's our...do you have a rain date in mind?
No. If we have a rain...
Cross your fingers, then.
I will probably go to Van Buren's school and see if we can run it out like we did for his party to, like, a GoFundMe, because it's...the weather is not so great, and I can't risk him being outside and not feeling...
We can help you with this request, but not the weather. Sorry.
I know. We're praying to the rain gods at this thing.
Well, good luck. Hope it's a smash.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for stopping in.
Thanks.
Item C, can I get a motion waiving the open container law for Sunday, August 8th, Friday, September 6th, and Thursday, September 19th? Paper Mill Island concerts from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. These concerts are being held by our village promoter, Creative Concerts.
Moved.
I'll second that.
Steven, can you give us any kind of an update on how the summer's been going? I mean...I mean, I know people like the concerts, but pretty good attendance?
Very good. The other... Roughly 1,400 people, just shy of 1,400. Um...he's told me he's got three events planned. He's told me that pre-event ticket sales have been pretty good, so, uh...you know, I don't know what to make of that, other than he's optimistic for these next three events.
Most of the ones I haven't heard of, but I guess when you get older, that happens. But a lot of people I know have been excited about the concerts they're bringing in, so...
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
I have one question.
Okay.
So, the third concert looks like it's on a Thursday night. Are...are they going till 11?
No, the only concert that has permission to 11 is the, uh...is this Sunday, the August 18th event.
Okay, so, and the Friday, they're allowed to go till 11?
They are, but they haven't, he hasn't been.
But the Thursday one, I just wanted to make that...
Yeah, let's make a note that the 19th one is only till 10:00 p.m. Thanks, Mick.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Concert, that's at 10:00. The open container? Don't they stay out there sometimes?
I don't think they're serving alcohol after the concert's over.
Whatever, I don't know.
All right. Item D, can we get a motion authorizing the mayor to sign a new memorandum of agreement for the Central New York Stormwater Coalition?
Moved.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item E, get a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the 2018-2019 MS4 annual report.
Moved.
Second that.
All in favor?
What does MS4 stand for?
Stormwater.
The MS4.
That's the municipal designation for us being our own stormwater administrator.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item F, get a motion to appoint Matthew Cox and Jonathan Ream to the zoning board of appeals, effective September 1st, 2019, at a rate of $50 a month.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item G, get a motion to accept the resignation of Maceau Markham from the planning board, effective immediately.
Moved.
Second that.
We have an alternate in place to move into his spot, but we do need alternate now for the planning board and the zoning board. So if anybody is interested, getting involved with village affairs and learning what goes on, call me, get ahold of Greg Humphrey, we'll talk to you and see if you fit. And it would be nice to have alternates. So I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item H, get a motion to issue an order for an unsafe structure at 119...
51 Salina.
51 Salina Street.
This is for the removal of those structures.
And the further removal of those structures.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Any further business we need to discuss before we go into executive session? Seeing none, can I get a motion to move into executive session regarding PBA negotiations?
Moved.
And DPW.
And DPW. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, maybe Ruth seconded.
I did, yeah, sorry.
No action anticipated.